Everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Hall meeting for Thursday, April 24, 2025. I'm calling the meeting to order at 9:30, and I would like to recognize that we work, live, and play on the unceded territories of the Seashell and the Skowhomiis Nations. Excellent. So, we have an agenda ahead of us, and I'm looking to see if there's any changes to the agenda, or if we shall adopt it as it is.
Move.
Move to adopt, seconded, all in favor? Very good. Okay, so we have an agenda. I have, I will go to make a motion to accept all reports. Seconded, seconded, all in favor? Very good. Okay. We have a delegation here. We have Michael Ernst and Jim Phillips from the Marine Parks Forever Society regarding the exploring partnership opportunities. And I'm going to welcome our delegate, and you can turn your camera on.
Turn the camera on.
And you have a microphone in front of you.
Thank you very much.
So, please let us know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and Board members for allowing us to make this presentation.
My kind of voice.
Yeah, sorry, I'll try and speak more distinctly. I'm with the Marine Park Forever Society. I don't need to read through on our, if, can we bring up the presentation on the screen?
Chair.
Lovely, thank you very much. Not that I'm not used to computers, I'm just not used to all this modern technology I have here. We are a nonprofit group, I don't need to read through the information you have here, I want to be very sensitive as to our time commitment. But the purpose of this presentation, it's one of eight that we're making to all regional districts on the Georgia Strait. Yours is the third, we've already spoken to Nanaimo and to Kothat. The objective of our presentation is, we are looking for opportunities to spend money in land acquisition and establishing of facilities for recreational boaters. And when I say recreational boaters, it's not just yachters, it could be small boat owners, it could be kayakers, or other people who are on the water for recreational purposes. There's a summary here of our work, we've contributed over $2 million, and done a number of improvements on marine parks up and down the coast. And this year, our most recent donation was $200,000 to acquisition of land and Suterna Island. We are now in the process of actually forming up with other groups with funding, who can come forward and even make larger donations and make the money go further. We have two objective, presentation objectives here, and I tried to summarize these, hang on. Actually, I did send this through in PowerPoint. Excuse me, can you scroll that down for me? It's not going well.
There we go.
Okay.
Just taking a little bit.
There we are. Which is the button I do?
It was just the scroll, scroll wheel right here.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, I'm used to Macintosh, sorry. We have two objectives, one is to review our contribution to BC Parks in this district, and secondly, discuss the possibility of similar partnerships here. I'm going to ask Jim Phillips, is he is available to come in, because Jim has the knowledge, he has the background information and history of all the contributions that have been done in this area in partnership with BC Parks. Is Jim available?
Good morning. I'm not sure if I'm up on video, but can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. As Michael pointed out, our role is really twofold, and we've had many opportunities since the 1990s to contribute, mostly in partnership with BC Parks, but also with Parks Canada, and in some cases with regional districts, for instance, the Cowerton Valley Regional District. We've been able to help establish new parks in some cases, in other cases, we've put better mooring arrangements, sometimes a dinghy dock, facilities that really have a twofold purpose, one, of course, to make it more convenient, safer for boaters, to secure their boats in an anchorage somewhere, and of course, to protect the shoreline a little bit, to control where people come ashore, and control where people tie up their boats. The arbutus trees appreciate that along the shoreline, and of course, it keeps, keeps our boaters away from the oysters and the sharp rocks on the water's edge. So that's been a big success for us. We've contributed in your region, we thought it was worthwhile pointing that out. We do have contributions that we've made, and developments in Hardy Island, on Nelson, Nelson Island, above the Jervis Inlet, it's a good marine park. We've contributed to Princess Louisa, I think you're probably all familiar with that in one form or another. The Princess Louisa International Society looks after that, together with BC Parks, and we, we help out with that. There have been other opportunities, and we would look forward to opportunities that, you know, that your team might come up with, with regards to maybe expansions in How Sound, more developments of regional parks, key areas, particular properties that come on the market, or it could be, maybe, I don't know, Sergeant's Bay, Portus Bay area come to mind as well, more in Jervis Inlet. Opportunities like this, either existing parks to put in mooring boys, stirratties, or new parks, adding to areas that are already, one of your parks, or something that you have targeted. And we have, we don't have unlimited funds, of course, but we can contribute some hundreds of thousands when the opportunity arises. We're both conservation-focused and recreational boating-focused, maybe leaning a little bit towards recreational boating, but we can also bring in other partners, such as BC Parks Foundations, and they have private trusts and private funds that come in as well. So that's about it for an introduction.
Well, thank you. If you want to stop sharing your screen, we can turn to the directors and see if they have any questions for you.
Sure. Yes, thank you. I just wanted to put down as our last request here is, oh, sorry, the committee to consider starting a dialogue with us that could lead maybe to similar partnerships here within the regional district. So, we're open to questions. Jim, is he available to answer questions? Am I right? Okay, thank you. And I'll turn my microphone off?
Yes, thank you. Directors, do you have any questions for the delegation? There we go. Kate Louise Stanford from Area F, what are your questions?
Thank you, Chair. A lot of your interest is on the shoreline in How Sound, and I'm wondering, what is your engagement process with First Nations that have a special?
Sorry, Kate, you're fading away. Something happened to your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Kind of barely.
Okay.
That, that's good.
Okay. I'm just wondering what work you have done to connect, to communicate with First Nations, especially in How Sound, as they are the interested party in how forshore development and park acquisition is managed in, in that area. And also, the Alcatzam How Sound biosphere is also part of that planning process for How Sound.
Well, I can try to answer that if you like. We have taken a bit of a backseat when we're dealing with BC Parks, and as you know, it's a government-to-government engagement process typically. Informally, we like to chat with First Nations and try to build a relationship, and maybe get outside that formal involvement with BC Parks, Parks Canada in a similar fashion. We, we need to get the buy-in, obviously, of First Nations to do anything on the coast. And we look forward to opportunities to do that. We do depend on our partners in government to take the lead on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. I'm going to look to Director Gabby Ass.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation, very interesting. I'm wondering if you could kind of paint the picture a little better for me, the mechanism of that, of a partnership with the local government, how would it work? And do you have examples of other local governments that you've worked with in the past, and how, how did that work? Like, when it comes to identifying land, purchasing land, like, kind of, an overview of the mechanics of it would be great.
I'll try this one, Jim, and then please, if you'll fill in. Based on my experience in Nova Scotia, I was working with a similar group called the Mahone Islands Conservation Association, it's a group my wife and I started back about 20-odd years ago. We never owned land, our association, it was either owned by the province or owned by the local municipalities. We would identify an island or a shoreline piece that could be used for conservation or recreational purposes, primarily conservation. We would then look for a partner to help acquire that piece of land. We would contribute up to, anywhere from a third to a half for the purchase of that piece of land. The land was then transferred to the municipality or to the province, and then we would set up a stewardship agreement with that entity. What the stewardship agreement was, basically, they could not sell, mortgage hypothecate, or do anything with that piece of land without our permission. And secondly, we would look after the overall usage of the island, because they didn't want to set up parks, okay? They had, the province did not want parks, any more parks to deal with. So, we would go in and make sure the beaches were kept clean, and now we're into a situation where we are helping them to acquire moorings and put moorings in. The moorings belong to the municipalities. Jim, do you want to add anything to that, please?
Yes, I would suggest that it's pretty open from our perspective, the way we would deal with BC Parks, Parks Canada, a regional district, in acquisition is very, very flexible. Really, we want to contribute and see the land protected. As Mike's pointed out, the stewardship, the ownership and the stewardship gets passed to the other party, and we're pretty flexible on how to, how to do it. Obviously, an organization with hundreds of thousands is going to need the support of the regional district, the province, the federal government, or some other organization with deep pockets to actually close a deal. But we can be significant in that role, and we're happy to sort of discuss whatever works for the regional district.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I don't see any more questions from the directors. It's not our policy to make any decisions based on a, on a presentation as they come to us, but it is food for thought for at least a few of our directors who do have waterfront property that they need to care for. So, I thank you for your time and the information that you've passed to us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Board members, and we hope that we will be back in touch in the future. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, so we're going to move on to report 4.1, the Pender Harbor Transfer Station Food Waste Update, Solid Waste Management Coordination, 4.1. Andrea Pratou, I believe, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Manager Saul is not going to speak, we've got our general manager, that's excellent, General Manager Rosenbaum is going to speak on this, Pender Harbor Transfer Station Food Waste Service Update. The, the reports in the agenda kind of confused me when I first read through this, the, there is a report in this agenda from a year ago tomorrow, and so I, I took that to be today's report, but it's not. So, you've got an update for us 364 days later? Thank you.
Thank you. This report provides an update on the food waste drop-off service at the Pender Harbor Transfer Station. On April 25, 2024, the board received a report on the outcome of the pilot program for this service, and it was found that the participation in the program was too low to sustain the service with the current funding model. The board subsequently passed a resolution to initiate a procurement process to continue food waste drop-off service based on the pilot program outcomes. An RFP was issued, and no viable service provider was found. As a result, the service will end on May 1 of this year. Staff recommend a temporary suspension of the program, and will continue to explore viable alternatives for food waste diversion in Electoral Area A. A communication plan is in place to inform users of the change, and staff are here to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for that. It's, yeah, it's a bit, a bit of a shame that the Pender Harbor area is going to be losing this service. I'm wondering if, if there is any alternate available to them. Do we still subsidize composters here at the SCRD? We do?
Yep. So, residents have the option of home composting, or sorry, home composting, and bringing materials to seashell at salish soils.
Good, excellent, because we, we understand now that the, the food waste that goes into our landfill is a major problem, it's, it's bulky, and it creates these gases that we're trying to keep from entering the atmosphere. I'm looking to director, alternate director, Alexandria, you have a question for our, our staff?
Ultimately, I have a couple of questions, but I'll go through and share. I wondered, when we talk about in the recommendations, you know, we were temporarily suspending, obviously, if there's no provider, we can't, are we just going to continue to look for a provider, or are we looking to look at all sorts of alternative solutions, with the goal of creating that? And secondly, what do you expect to next year?
Thank you. Staff are ongoing, are in ongoing discussions and explorations to find any solution to continue to provide the service, and we will, we will report back to the board once we have one. Currently, we don't have anything in place. Yeah, we're working on it. It's, it's not that, that it is suspended, and hence, we just leave it as it is, no, we, we will try to revive this service within the means we have. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's my inexperience there, Kate, hope you can hear me now. In the previous report, the 2024 report, you had looked at some potentials to reduce fixed cost and maybe amendment for some other users, I don't know if you would call them commercial users, or that we could increase volume. Would those kind of changes impact our ability to find a provider, or we just got, like, zero interest?
The purpose of trying to find more users is to hopefully make it more financially viable for both us and a service provider.
Very, so the uptake is, I'm going to, I'm going to put you on pause for a second, and I'm going to turn to Director Gabby Ass. You have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and through you. The last I remember looking at the rebate program for home composters, there was not, it was not a full, fully subscribed program, and I'm wondering what the status is right now, and whether or not it could be pushed harder now that there's an opportunity, whether that's part of the communications plan, whether, like, it could, the rebate could be increased for that area, or any, any, anything we can do now to reduce the amount of green waste coming into the landfill?
Thank you, and especially, I believe, especially for Area A, if there's any kind of extra push that we can do to help the, the citizens of Area A. Any ideas?
Yeah, so the communication plan informing residents of the change does mention home composter rebates. They are planned to be available starting May 1 of this year. We did make a small change to the program, where we had required preapproval, which required filling out an extra form, so we've kind of streamlined that to hopefully improve the intake. But at this time, the composter rebate is for $100 per property.
Excellent, thank you. Alternate Director Alexandria?
That was basically going to be my next question.
Oh, excellent. No, it sounds like staff is kind of on top of it, doing what they can to help mitigate the, the loss of this service. I'm going to turn to Director McMahon, I have a question of my own after.
Right, thank you. I'm just wondering, too, if there's anything that we can do in terms of education on composting alternatives. I was reading up on the city of Nelson, tried electric countertop composters, and it, it wasn't entirely successful, unfortunately, but it, what the heck, it was a good idea, and there are some households for whom that works very nicely. And I'm not sure that, you know, most people in the rural areas are familiar with the variety of composter technology available these days. So, do we have opportunities to demonstrate or, or otherwise educate?
Thank you, Director McMahon. I wonder if it's a, if it's a let's talk page, or I don't know what.
The page that has the information about how to apply has kind of three main pieces. One is whether you're eligible, the process, and then picking out a composter. So, there's a pretty extensive list there, as well as resources to, I can't remember the name, but there's a composting education center in Victoria that do a much better job than we do, so a lot of the direction is in that way, so that people can choose a composter that fits their home's needs, because there's volumes or types of composter that people need to learn about.
Thank you. We've obviously hit a composting nerve. I'm going to look to Director Stanford.
Yeah, along the same lines, can everyone hear me? Is how much, how many, is there any sense of what, how many properties can't use garden composters? Like, I wouldn't, I'm assuming that most people have access to a wider area in order to do a traditional form of, of composting. And it may be that that is just how people are operating. They don't necessarily have to purchase a composter, they just have their own system in the backyard. How many sort of multi-unit dwellings are there that would have more challenges with having individual composting? Is there any sense of that?
So, I believe the question is, what, she said multi-unit, I guess, more dense population that have difficulties in this composting. Do you have any idea?
Thank you for the question. I don't have the answer to that question. I think Area A usually is single resident, larger properties, there are only very few multi-residential. So, I think the majority of the properties, the vast majority of the properties in the Pender area will be able to have composting opportunities on their own property.
Thank you. My question is, in order to, are you going to be able to continue to search for a contractor that can take this over without direction from the board?
Yes, thank you. That's the second part of the recommendation that is already on, that is listed on our report.
Very good, thank you. So, I'll look to the directors for questions, or to put forward a motion. Director Alexandria?
I will move the recommendations on, I believe it's page seven, I want to make sure I'm in the right report, yeah. But I, I hear you about not having a date in there to come back, but I will move the, the motion.
motions, or sorry, the recommendations as presented on page seven.
Very good. And I have a second for that. Any questions on the motion? I do not see any, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Very good, so that passes. Thank you for your presentation. We're going to move on to, let's have a look. Item 4.2, City Works Software Licensing Agreement, Three-Year Renewal. And we've got Manager Doyle sitting in for Manager Nelson, and we've got, yeah, there's a lot of people in different chairs today. That's awesome. Manager Doyle, would you like to introduce this report for us?
The report in front of you today presents options for renewals for the City Works contract. Recommended, use the three-year renewal option, that's the most cost-effective. City Works is a critical software that our utilities department uses for work management, and we're continuing to roll out to other departments. If there's any questions, staff are able to answer them.
Is anyone on the board familiar with this software? Because I'm not. Very good. Director Gabias.
Thank you, Chair. Not, never used it, but I would like to move the recommendations on page 16.
I see a second, and I do not see any other questions. This software is not available for the, for the directors to use, is it?
No, no, the software is a computerized maintenance management software. It's used on our backend for work management.
Okay. No, I'm fine. I've got City Skylines. That's fine. So I see no other questions. I'm going to call, I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Very good. Okay, that passes. Thank you, Manager Doyle. We're going to move on to 4.3, which is Manager Taylor, the Status of Reserves and Holding Funds as of March 31st. This is for information. Do I, there's no, there's no motion that goes along with this report. This is for information only. Do the directors have any questions about this report? Very good. Director McMahon, go ahead.
Yes. How much of a reserve is enough is is sort of the interesting question. For the landfill closure fund, we have a target that we know that that's what it's going to cost, so we're saving for a particular project. But with the other reserves, how do we determine whether we've got enough money?
Oh, I see Manager Wing is in the audience, but you, you go ahead.
Thank you for the question. Staff are working towards developing an internal policy or developing a policy to develop a reserve policy to determine what a reasonable level would be. That just hasn't been formalized quite yet.
Right, and I doubt that would be a blanket policy, because the different functions are quite different, and operating versus capital, so would it, how would, how would that policy look?
That is correct. It would probably be service-dependent. The development of that policy, again, has not yet been developed, and we would probably seek input from various different people throughout the organization to develop such a policy to ensure that nobody's kind of left behind and that it's consistent with the needs of the organization.
Thank you, Manager Taylor. I'm going to turn to Director Stanford. She has a question.
Yes, following that, is it more towards X number of months operating, like three months operating, always having that kind of reserve? Is that the angle that is being looked at, or is it far more complex than that?
There's further complexities other than that. There's various different factors that kind of come into play when you're thinking of a reserve policy.
Director Stanford, was that a good enough answer for you? Okay, very good. I noticed that, no, never mind. I don't see any other questions, so we're going to move along. Thank you, Manager Taylor. So our next item is 4.4, Director Constituency and Travel Expenses for the period ending March 31, 2025. Do the directors have any questions about this? I don't see any. Oh, there we go. Director McMahon, you go ahead.
Well, it's not so much a question, as I appreciate the more detailed reports, that it took me a little while to tease out how it was working, because we didn't previously see a breakdown on the funding source, whether it was 110 general government or 130 U B C M A V I C C. So this is really helpful, and and I really appreciate the information coming forward.
Very good, thank you. I don't see any other questions from any of the other directors, so I'm going to move along to item 4.4, oh, no, sorry, item 4.5. Manager Crop is in, is in the house? Yes, okay, very good. It's contracts between $50,000 and $100,000 from January 1, 2025 to March 31, 2025. There seems to be six of them, and I turn to the directors. Director McMahon, is your hand a residual or?
Residuals.
Turn to the directors and see if they have any questions about this, about this report. Is Director Rosenbaum wanting to, oh, go ahead, Director Ainsworth.
Based on the information provided here, what is a Lumicam?
What is a Lumicam? You've stumped me. Maybe staff can answer that question. Oh, a Lumicam, the company, that's numbers three, four, and five on our list. Well, is there staff to answer that, or should I give it a, is direct, ah, there we go, Director Rosenbaum, you're going to say that it's for settling, isn't it?
Thank you. Yes, it's the chemicals coagulants that we're using at our chicken plant. And last several months, we ordered quite a bunch of the material in stock to make sure that we have good pricing for the upcoming ones.
That's a really basie response. Thank you, Director Rosenbaum. So it's used in settling ponds, it's a coagulant, it, any, any impurities within the water collect to this chemical, and it drops to the bottom, and then that is, that doesn't become part of our drinking water.
Thank you, Director of Infrastructure Services Baxte.
If we have no other questions on this particular item, I see we have come to the end of our committee of the whole meeting. I'm going to look at the, see if there's anybody in the audience. Nope, there's no one that wishes to speak to us. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. There's one, and a second. Good, all in favor? Very good. Thank you for joining us today.